Let's see if we can beat Southside's energy last night. I had to really work hard to pull out some type of, you know, excitement. So, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
There we go. We're already starting. I can't say the Southside. You know anything about the Southside. I'm a Southsider, true and true, but it is good to be here. I want to thank you for coming to tonight's Finance Committee hearing on our capital budget. I certainly want to start by thanking the department leaders who are here to discuss the administration's plans for the proposed capital budget. I want to thank my colleague, my friend, Councilmember Mitch Brown, who was right by my side last night as well. And certainly, I want to thank all of you for being here to be part of this conversation as we continue to engage with community leaders regarding the capital budget. The purpose of these hearings is to present the city's capital improvement budget and capital improvement plan to residents. Because we're here on the North Side today, our presentation will focus on the northern half of Columbus. So, it's not specific to, say, just this neighborhood. It's the northern half of Columbus. This will be followed up by one more public conversation next week, Tuesday, or June 13th, at 4:00 p.m., which will be virtual. So, if folks hear about this, or you need folks to add some advocacy, please, please spread the word that there's another opportunity for engagement on June 13th. Our goal with this series of events is to help residents better understand the budget, to answer questions that folks may have, and to hear feedback from community members. The capital budget, the capital projects we're discussing tonight concern physical assets here in our city. So, we're talking about roads and sidewalks. We're talking about roadways and other physical infrastructure. And we understand how important these infrastructure investments are. And for that reason, it has been a longstanding tradition that the City of Columbus set aside a quarter of every dollar collected in our city income tax for capital projects. This funding structure ensures that the city is able to consistently put out these budgets every year. The city has a AAA bond rating, and that ensures that the city can borrow money at the lowest interest rates. Our AAA bond rating saves Columbus voters millions of dollars each year because it allows us to have a lower interest rate. But these capital investments are no good unless they meet the needs of our residents. So, we're here today to hear input from residents on what matters in their communities. There are speaker slips available at the sign-in desk. Raise your hand if you were able to get a speaker slip. Everybody that would like to speak has a speaker slip, all right? If a resident would like to speak, please sign up at the front table, and we will get you on the list. We will begin this hearing with presentations by each department. So, each department will share their capital budget allocations and projects that will be happening, again, on the northern half of our city. After each presentation, the council members will have the opportunity to ask the departments questions. After we've gone through each department, then we'll take any final question from council members and then hear public testimony. Depending on the specificity of any question raised by residents, either a council member or a department head will respond to each question. The capital budget you'll hear this evening is a proposed budget. That's an important component. That is what is proposed as of today. It is not the final budget. We are still in the middle. You guys are an important component of getting to that final budget. So, it is through these public input process and the community conversations that we will arrive at that final product for a council vote. Our intention is to vote on a budget by the last week or the first week of, last week of June, first week of July. So, we have about another two and a half weeks to work through these community conversations. With us tonight, we have Chris Long, who is from the Finance Department. We have Aaron Prosser from the Department of Development. We have Mr. Dan G. from the Department of Public Safety. We have Steve Wenzel from Department of Public Service and Transportation. We have Mr. Jonathan Lee from the Department of Public Utilities. And we have Mr. Steve Hyland from Recreation and Parks Department. The only other thing that I would add is that council was really intent on listening. For the last couple of years, council has done neighborhood bus tours with residents. I have been on a bus tour with a couple of folks in this room in your neighborhoods. Those also are part of the input process. And so, when we talk about gathering the information to get to the final budget, you have what the mayor proposes, so that's the document that we're talking about tonight. You have information from the bus tours, and Chris Long was gracious enough to join us on most of the bus tours that we did. So, we have the information that we received from there. Council's Community Affairs Team also solicited information from neighborhood, our area commissions. That information is now with council. And so, this is kind of the, not the final, the final piece of now bringing what the mayor has proposed to the community to then hear in-person feedback tonight. And so, we, this is a comprehensive process that we hope will get us to a budget that you are able to see yourselves in, to see your advocacy represented in. And the last thing that I would say is, and I said this early in my remarks, we work on a capital improvement budget, which is specific to this year, 2023. I think almost as important as the actual 2023 budget is the second component to our budget planning, which is the capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan is a five-year planning document that we use to feed into the capital improvement budget. So, there is a percentage, a very high percentage, of projects that you will hear about in the capital improvement budget that we're talking about today for 2023, that were from the five-year capital improvement plan that we've worked on together. So, if you don't necessarily see your advocacy in today's, in this year's budget, it is just as important to advocate to get it on the five-year plan, because that is where we pull for that. That is, say, the basis of how we start each year's capital budget, is looking at the very next year's capital improvement plan. So, just wanted to give that note. Councilmember, do you have any comments before we get started?
Yes, sir.
With that, I'm going to turn it over to my partner, my colleague. This year, and only this year, I am also not just council president, I'm chair of the Finance Committee. It's too much work, so I'm only doing it one year, but this year, I get to work very closely with Deputy Director Long. Director.
Good evening, Aaron. First, I just wanted to thank President Harden, Councilmember Brown, and all city council for their time and consideration of the mayor's 2023 capital budget, and also want to thank all of you for being here tonight. We really do appreciate all your input. My presentation tonight will be pretty high-level, meaning I just wanted to go over how do we arrive at a capital budget? What does that mean? How do we pay for it? And before I get started, I also wanted to say you'll be hearing from all of our colleagues here on my left. They'll be doing a deeper dive into their individual departments. And as Council President Harden mentioned, it's going to handle the, sort of, the northern half of our city. And so, you'll see some things that are more citywide in nature. You'll see some things that are more closer to your neighborhood. So, just, just kind of be aware that some of it may not necessarily apply to you directly, but we're trying to be comprehensive in our overview. Okay, so, with that.
So, the city has two main budget cycles. The first one is not what we're here to talk about tonight. It's the operating budget, but it's worth just mentioning. It funds the daily operations of the city. So, the people, the supplies, the services, all of those things that go into providing daily services to all of our residents are part of that operating budget. The mayor proposes that to President Harden and City Council in November of each year, and it's paid for largely by the 2.5% income tax that all of our residents pay. What we are here to talk about tonight, obviously, is our capital budget. And if the operating budget handles, sort of, like, the people and the supplies and services for daily operations, our capital budget really pays for bricks and mortar, largely, the places that city operations happen. So, it's our rec centers, there's our community centers, it is our streets, it's our sidewalks, it's our police substations and fire stations. So, all of those kind of physical places where city business happens or where residents live is our capital budget. It is funded with a 25% set aside from income tax. So, everybody pays that 2.5%. Well, every, call 25 cents on the dollar goes into this special fund at the city called a special income tax fund, and it goes to pay for these capital infrastructure improvements. Mr. Lee, who is to my left, will be talking about public utilities tonight. Most of what public utilities infrastructure is paid for by actual ratepayer. Like, when people pay their utility bills, they use that to help fund infrastructure. So, how does the capital budget come into being? So, throughout the year, Finance Department, which is where I work, we largely act as a facilitator and a compiler. All of the departments pull in requests throughout the year, they submit those to the Finance Department, and we pull all those together into what is the mayor's proposed capital budget. So, tonight, that's what we're going through, is the mayor's proposed 2023 capital budget. We have public hearings, which is where we're at tonight, obviously, and then we hope for adoption with considerations, of course, by council, hopefully later this month. And then later, we'll do a bond sale. Bond sales is actually how we end up funding a lot of these operations eventually. So, lots of steps in the process, right? I know it's hard for everyone to see, but this is just a brief history, going back to 2015, of what does the size of the city's capital budgets actually look like. So, dating back to 2015, we were a little less than $1 billion annually for our capital budget. This year, the mayor's proposing a little over $1.7 billion. And we're very honestly grateful and fortunate to live in a city and community that the economic prospects allow for that, that size of capital budget. And you'll notice that it's a stacked bar chart, so there's, like, two different colors there on each bar. The red indicates carryover funding. In other words, we don't always spend within a year all of our capital funding, right? Some of these projects take a long time. So, if we have to carry money over from year to year, whoops, we call that carryover funding. It has to still be approved by President Harden and council. We can't just keep spending it, right? And then the blue stacked bar there is new dollars. So, those are new projects with new funds, and we're going to have over $1 billion this And then finally, this pie chart just shows you how we're paying for that in visual terms. So, 722 million of the 1.1, 1.7 billion is going to be paid for via special income tax dollars. 967 million is from enterprise, which Mr. Lee's going to talk about. And then there's a little sliver that's paid for by internal service. So, with that, I want to say thank you, President Harden, and council members, for your time and consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. One thing that we didn't do last night, but I want to hit on the top, was explain, so most of what we fund through a capital budget are city-owned properties. In very few instances, we do work with community partners on community, on community benefit assets. In this budget, there are a couple of those that the mayor has proposed. Would you highlight? One of the ones that sticks out to me is resources, I think about $3 million, the mayor proposed to work with the Columbus Metropolitan Library, one to build a library, or to redo the library, I believe, at Linden. Director.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, President Harden. So, yes, we're very excited to say that this year's capital budget includes $3 million in financial support to the Columbus Metro Library system. And over $1 million of that is going to go towards expansion of the Linden branch of the Columbus Metro Library. So, very excited to do that. I know President Harden has been a fierce advocate of that, so we're happy that that is in tonight's proposal. Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from my colleagues? I'd like to acknowledge that my councilmember, colleague, Councilmember Remy is here. I didn't acknowledge also the committees that, actually, I'm not going to do that, because, would you acknowledge the committees that you chair?
Sure. I am Chair of Public Safety, Environment, and the Administration.
And I'm Chair of Recreation and Parks and Education.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next, we'll have the Department of Development, led by Director, oh my gosh.
Prosser.
Director Prosser, I apologize. Aaron Prosser.
Thank you, Council President Harden, members of council, residents of the North Side. My name is Aaron Prosser, and I'm the Assistant Director of Housing Strategies in the Department of Development. It's my privilege this evening to share with you the 2023 Department of Development-proposed capital budget. The reason I'm here with you tonight is because 71% of this budget proposal will go to support the development and the preservation of affordable housing in our city. With the passage of the 2022 Affordable Housing Bond, our department is able to more than double the amount of funding for affordable housing projects from last year. This critical infusion of funding comes at a time when so many of our families are feeling the impacts of the housing scarcity and seeing their housing costs rise and the challenges of securing affordable, safe, and stable housing becoming more and more challenging. The Department of Development also utilizes our capital funding to support our neighborhoods, to build access to that affordable housing, and promote community development and create jobs that pay a living wage. Our 2023 capital improvement budget, let's see, totals this year is $70.8 million. In that $70.8 million, we have $50 million will be going towards the development and preservation of affordable housing, $9.75 million for community development initiatives, $10.75 million for economic development projects, and $350,000 to support our human services capital projects. A budget reflects our priorities, and with more than 71% of this year's capital budget request going to support affordable housing, it is clearly the top priority for our city and the Department of Development. The investments included in this capital budget request are based on the guiding principles of the Columbus Housing Strategy that was announced last year. The capital budget proposal was developed with the goal of ensuring that families in our community don't pay more than 30% of their income to be able to live in the neighborhood of their choice. The budget request also reflects the learned outcomes from the 2019 $50 million Affordable Housing Bond. With those dollars, the city brought 1,300 units of affordable housing into the city. We brought those units online twice as fast with that funding, and we leveraged more than $300 million of other public and private funds to bring those units. In November of last year, the Columbus voters approved the sale of up to $200 million in bonds to support that affordable housing in our city. And this 2023 capital budget request includes the allocation of the first $50 million of that $200 million. Unlike the other departments that you'll hear from this evening, a lot of our projects are done with partners, and we rely on those partners who build new affordable housing, manage our shelter system, and bring new job opportunities into the city. Our proposed investments with this bond package include a number of projects on the North Side. Included in our funding for affordable housing, we will have four projects that will be located in the North Side: Nelson Park on Maryland Avenue, Broadley Lofts on Allegheny Avenue, Country Ridge on Farmhouse Lane, and the NCJC Downtown Campus. We will also have $11.5 million to support and expand homeownership opportunities, affordable homeownership opportunities in our community, $13 million for the preservation of existing affordability in our communities, $5 million to support housing and shelter for our most vulnerable, and $7 million for North Market Streetscape improvements. Looking ahead to the capital improvement budget for the Department of Development in the years '24 through '28, we will continue to focus on investments that bring affordable housing into our community and support our most vulnerable residents. The remaining $150 million of that $200 million 22 Affordable Housing Bond dollars will be allocated over those years, based on the principles of the Columbus Housing Strategy and on the needs of our families. We will continue to invest in new affordable rental units, new affordable homeownership opportunities, preservation of existing affordability in our communities, and supportive housing. President Harden, I appreciate the opportunity to share with you the Department of Development's proposed 2023 capital budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions council members have.
Thank you, Director Prosser. We've also been joined by President Protem of City Council, also chairs of.
Utilities, zoning, building policy.
See, that's why I don't try. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Councilmember Remy.
Director, how is affordable housing determined? Like, you know, for, for instance, like, rate, rates that are determined? What process is used, and how are individuals determined to be at what AMI?
I think that's a great question. As we look at affordability, it's all very personal to all of us as to what's affordable for us. And what we're really looking for is making sure that our families aren't housing cost-burdened. And in partnership with folks in the federal government, with the Housing and Urban Development Division, we really look at families not paying more than 30% of their income on their housing expenses. That's going to be your rent and mortgage, but also your utilities, so the total expense budget for your housing. As we all know, as we continue to see housing scarcity in our community, that opportunity is getting harder and harder to do at different income levels. And so, with our capital dollars, what we're able to do is to participate in these projects where the units are income-restricted and protected. So, they are based on your income, and they're based on that need to not pay more than 30% of your income on your housing. And so, when we look at the projects that we'll be supporting, they average out at 60% of our area median income. So, they have a, units that will be affordable for folks. If you are an individual, you would be making less than $39,000 a year to support your family, and you would be eligible for a unit in that building, and you would not pay more than 30%. If you're managing a family of four on that income, then you would be eligible for that affordable housing within a household income of $54,000. So, it is a way for us not only to inject affordable units into the community, but, again, making sure they're paired with families in those income brackets and making sure that they're protected in that housing in the long term. So, the dollars become very meaningful to a lot of families in our community.
And what's the difference between the cost of constructing an affordable housing unit versus a market-rate project?
Also, a very good question. There really isn't any. When we look at the construction that our affordable housing partners do, it costs just as much to buy the land, it costs just as much for the lumber, the labor, the cost of capital. All of those costs are still part of the work that they have to do. And so, when they spend all those dollars on a market-rate project where we're not participating in the project, those rents are going to be needing to be as high as needing to pay that, that construction cost. When we, along with our partners at Franklin County, the State of Ohio, and the federal government, put public dollars into those projects, we can buy down that rent so that it is affordable to our working families in central Ohio. And I think that's a really important thing, in that affordable housing is really housing in our community, and what we're really doing is making sure that it's income-based, and that we have those opportunities for units in our community for our families.
So, we have greater bond capacity, so, you know, why don't we push to do more, more, more than just the 50 million?
That's a good question, because the voters did authorize $200 million for the expenditures around affordable housing. And as we look at the pipeline of projects, we have a number of really great partners in our community that are delivering affordable housing projects. These projects do take a long time, and they have folks that they are working with and competing against, also our market-rate partners, and that pipeline has a certain amount of capacity. And we know with that 50 million, we can allocate that this year and get a number of projects underway. We also know that there are other needs in the community, and as my colleagues will articulate, there are other things we need to be working on as well, and there is capacity that we have to consider. And so, as we think about what that pipeline availability is, and also all the other interests that we have in the community with the capital budget, 50 million felt like a place where we could make a big impact this year, and also make sure that we're executing on the other critical priorities of the city.
And I think, I mean, you pointed out a little bit about how that's determined and that sort of thing, but I think it's important to note that somebody, you know, a single mother that's a nurse, making $75,000 a year with two children qualifies for housing affordability.
Correct. I think when we talk about housing affordability, at times, we don't always recognize that it is the people working in our community, and a lot of them are already living in our community. And again, Columbus has been a naturally affordable place for a long time that we've all been here, but as new folks are coming into our community because of the opportunities, we're seeing those housing prices rise, and those opportunities for working families in our communities get more difficult, especially in proximity to those job opportunities. And so, we want to make sure that there are those places for those families to live, and continue to deliver things that we need in our community, like childcare and healthcare services, making sure that there's still folks to work in our grocery stores. Those are all really important parts of the fabric of all of our communities, and we want to make sure that those folks have a place to live in our city.
And then finally, when we talk about the construction of these, these types of projects, what's the difference between the aesthetics when you look at, you know, affordable, housing affordability projects versus market rate?
I think that's a great question, and I think we have really, over the last number of decades, been so conscientious about building affordable housing that is equivalent to market-rate housing. There are a number of projects, probably in all of our communities, that we don't know are affordable housing projects, because they really are done with care, and the idea that it doesn't really matter what the income of the individuals or families are behind those doors, that those are part of our communities, and we want to make sure that they have that same level of character and care that we expect from our market-rate partners as well.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Director. The one question I have was, yesterday, the Community Shelter Board, which leads our community in taking care of our unhoused residents, noted that we saw the, I think, the largest increase, one-time increase in homelessness in our city that we've been tracking. How does the capital budget speak to that portion of the housing continuum?
And I think that's one of the most incredible things about the bond dollars, is the flexibility that we have to address some of the needs where we don't have other funding opportunities. So, we do know that we have an increasing number of folks in our communities, and especially families, experiencing homelessness. In this budget, we're able to provide those $350,000 of emergency shelter repair to make sure that our shelters are where they need to be to serve those families. But in addition, we have $5 million in the budget to support interim housing opportunities. So, where we've got folks in our community where we know that they are experiencing homelessness, and we are looking for permanent housing for them. Our friends in the federal and state government don't have dedicated funding that we can access to provide housing for those folks. The bond dollars will allow us to allocate that $5 million to provide that kind of bridge housing, so that we can get folks into safe and stable situations while we locate them with some permanent housing for them or their family.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. Next department to come before this hearing is Safety Department, led by Dan G.
Thank you, President Harden. Thank you for having us in your community this evening, and also, members of council, on behalf of Safety Director Kate Bishadi, allow me to present to you some information regarding Public Safety 2023 Capital Budget. We propose about $54 million in new funding, and approximately $28.5 in carryover funds. The department is focused on the mayor's priorities of protecting Columbus neighborhoods by designing, constructing new police, fire facilities, procuring new fire apparatus, various improvements to other public safety buildings. These capital investments provide safe and efficient facilities and vehicles for public safety employees who provide essential services, as well as protect the lives and property of Columbus residents. With respect to investments in the northern part of Columbus, we have a major investment being made at the Carolyn Piedmont Avenue location along Interstate 71, where the, we will construct a real-time crime center, a new 911 emergency communication center, an emergency operations center, and a new police substation, too. The substation, too, right now, I believe, is located at Parkwood Avenue. Demolition contract has already been legislated and approved by council to tear down the existing structures. We're hoping that will occur sometime late summer this year, and we anticipate an architectural design contract, hopefully presented to council here, possibly before August recess. So, we're well on our way to moving forward with this project. Approximately $10 million of this project is carryover funds, and that's what we're using for the demolition and for the design, and there hopefully will be some additional dollars from that leftover to begin the construction contract. We also have an additional $5 million the mayor's proposing this capital budget for technology related to the Crime Gun Intelligence Center, which will be incorporated into the Real-Time Crime Center. The Crime Gun Intelligence Center will be, connect us, connect the city statistically and otherwise with other law enforcement agencies, not just in Ohio, but throughout the country, where we can track the use of weapons in our community, the use of illegal guns, et cetera. So, that's also something that we're looking forward to incorporating into the center. We also have, on the North Side, Fire Station 36, which is also currently in design. This fire station is at Central College and Harlem Road, on the far northeast side of the city, on property that, that we already own. There's $15 million in new funding for this station, and we anticipate the design contract is already underway. We hope to commence construction in the early spring of 2024, with hopefully completion by the, towards the end of 2025. It's about a 14- to 18-month construction. The 2023 capital budget for safety also proposes $10 million to procure fire apparatus, which, of course, would be ladders, engines, heavy rescue vehicles, EMS vehicles. This is actually an increase of about $4 million over our previous commitments the last several years. A lot of that is due to the rising cost and all the other issues that all of us have experienced as a result, I think, of the COVID economy, with slower supply chains, increasing prices, et cetera, et cetera, longer times to procure these items, and longer times to get them serviced when they break, they break down. So, in that sense, it's kind of a broken record. We also have, in this capital budget, $8 million in a combination of new funds and carryover funds for general renovations for police funds for general renovations for police and fire stations. These are things like pavement restorations, generator improvements, HVAC improvements, and upgrades, roof and window replacements. We have 34 fire stations and just under two dozen police substations that we're responsible for, for keeping in good operation order. And these funds go a long way to helping us with that. With respect to the capital plan, what President Harden and Director Long alluded to, the five-year plan, typically, we have apparatus funding there and also general renovation funds. We also, next year, we anticipate upwards of $40 million to construct the real-time crime center, the 911 center, emergency operations center. So the funds in this year's budget are designed, maybe some of that will be for construction. But ultimately, the bigger piece of that will come next year when the design is complete, we go out for bid, and we actually enter in construction for that facility. Of course, we also anticipate some general renovation funds. And depending on the financial condition of the city, we may hopefully also get a police substation or maybe a fire station in the next 12 to 24 months. So with that, that concludes my presentation. There's a couple highlights there. That was our last substation completed, the far north, the one on the far east side, and then, of course, fire apparatus that we purchased, and then one of our fire stations up there, the Mitchell J. Brown Fire Station at Greenlot Avenue. So thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director. I want to take a moment to introduce my colleague, Lourdes Barroso de Padilla, who is here. Councilman, would you introduce yourself and just tell what committees you chair, and I'll open it up for questions.
Absolutely. Thank you all, excuse me, thank you all for being here today. Sorry for running a little late. My other job as mom was conflicting with my timing here this evening. So I'm Councilmember Barroso de Padilla, and I chair Public Service and Transportation, so how folks get around roadway sidewalks, which I know we all know and love, Neighborhoods and Immigrant, Migrant, and Refugee Affairs. So that's everything dealing with our area commissions and grassroots organizations and everything where, where folks live. And then third is Seniors, Veterans, and Disability Affairs, which we codified this year, adding disability affairs onto the committee. So I like to say it's all the places where it's where people live, who the people are, and how they move. So excited to hear from you all the priorities that you have for your areas and your neighborhoods. And again, thank you for taking the time out to be with us this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember, any questions?
Sure. Director, talking a little bit about, people are frustrated in the community. We haven't been towing vehicles in the last few years. You know, impound lots full, that's the excuse that we've heard over and over and over again. There's $9 million in the capital budget, $4 million, I think, $5 million in carryover, for a total of 14 million for repaving and that sort of thing. Could you talk a little bit about that? And hopefully the expectation that that will also provide greater proficiency when it comes to that lot. And so we can get back doing the work that we need to do within the neighborhoods.
Yes. Councilmember Reimi, President Harden, members of council. So yes, on the south side, off Hall Road, impound lot road, I think officially is the address, is our impound lot. When it was originally constructed, it was a gravel parking lot. And what we have found over time is we need a hardened surface down there. There were a number of tow operators that didn't want to tow trucks, tow vehicles back in there, that the, the surface became rutted over time due to weather and et cetera. So we are going to pave that. There is, as you say, about $15 million that is in the capital budget to do so. Also, I'm happy to report that we have increased the number of auctions that we are having at that site to move vehicles out of there. We also are in the process of hiring a number of administrative staff, records technicians, and office assistants to have to process those impounded vehicles and get them off the lot. So I think we've had three or four of those positions filled here, or soon to be filled by the end of the month. And I'm pleased to report that I think we'll be making some progress there and get back to business as usual here very soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director. Next speaker to present to council is Mr. Steve Wenzel with Department of Public Service.
Good evening, President Harden, members of council, members of the community. Thank you for this opportunity to briefly speak about the Department of Public Services' proposed 2023 Capital Budget and to detail some of the projects that we're proposing for the north community, as well some of the citywide projects that we have going on, some of our initiatives. The Department of Public Services' proposed 2023 Capital Improvements Budget totals $301.9 million this year. That's made up of $131.1 million in new funding and $170.8 million in carryover funding that will invest in roadways, sidewalks, bikeways, bridges, and other projects that will improve the quality of life in our neighborhood. Some of the guiding principles that we use when we're developing our departmental capital improvements budget, the Public Service Department focuses on capital projects to create mobility access to jobs, schools, healthcare, and other services. The department also is leading at the planning, design, and construction of many citywide infrastructure projects, supporting Vision Zero principles to slow speeds and create safe conditions for pedestrians, cyclists, motorists, and transit users. As in most years, the centerpiece of Public Services' proposed capital budget is $36.9 million in new funding for the city's resurfacing program. The department maintains approximately 5,700 lane miles of city roadways. The resurfacing program mills the existing pavement, replaces it with new asphalt, performs partial and full death pavement repairs. We upgrade ADA ramps, curb repair, as well as pavement markings. This year, there will be three major resurfacing projects totaling $31.1 million. With these projects, the department plans to resurface over 180 streets and construct almost 700 ADA curb ramps across the city. The department also plans to spend another $1.5 million in crack ceiling and slurry ceiling, 278 of our city streets. Some of the streets are a sample of the streets that the, that we will be resurfacing as a part of these projects, especially in the northern communities, is Dresden Street from Fenton Street to Beltrish Drive, Smokey Mill Road from Simfield Road to Smokey Row Road, Aberdeen Avenue from Atwood Terrace to McGuffey Road, Canyon Drive from Overbook Drive to Glenmont Place. Of the $36.9 million in resurfacing, $4.3 million will go to urban paving projects. These are joint projects that we have between the department and the Ohio Department of Transportation. This year, we are allocating $1.5 million in the city's share of resurfacing Bush Boulevard from State Route 161 to Schrock Road, and Schrock Road from Bush Boulevard to the interstate. Included in this year's capital budget is new funding in the amount of $3.4 million for the Bridge Rehab Program. The type of work typically performed on bridges includes patching of concrete surfaces, micro-surfacing, painting, replacing of expansion joint seals, and crack ceiling. Also included in the 2023 Capital Improvements Budget is $18 million associated with the LINKUS program. LINKUS is a, is a central Ohio comprehensive mobility initiative aimed at addressing growth, affordability, and opportunity gaps within our community by making significant investments in transit, sidewalks, bikeways, trails, and roadway improvements. One of the key projects within the LINKUS initiative is the Northwest Bus Rapid Bus Transit Corridor, or BRT, which has been allocated $4 million in 2023 Capital Improvements Budget. An additional $2 million has been requested for the corridor's design completion in fiscal year 2025 in the capital improvement program or plan. The remaining $14 million of the allocated budget will contribute to advancing multiple projects to improve, improve transit and pedestrian access along the Northwest Corridor. Additionally, these funds will facilitate the ongoing design efforts for the West Broad Street and East Main Street BRT corridors. Also included in the capital, proposed capital improvements budget are other investments that are being made specific to the north side. This budget proposal includes $325,000 in new and carryover funding, which is also leveraging $1 million in grant funding from the Ohio Department of Transportation Safety Improvement Funds for the Intersection Improvement Project, Cleveland Avenue Fifth to Lennar. This project, which supports the Walk Safe on Cleveland Initiative and aligns with Vision Zero Columbus Principles, consists of pedestrian improvements at seven intersections along Cleveland Avenue, which include Camden Avenue, East 19th Avenue, Kenmore Road, Republic Avenue, Lakeview Avenue, Agler Road, and Lennar Road. Improvements consist of the installation of enhanced crosswalk markings, the installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons or pedestrian hybrid beacons at each intersection, and the replacement of non-ADA compliant curb ramps. The budget proposal also includes $1.3 million in new and carryover funding, which is leveraged by over $5.1 million in grant funding from the Ohio Department of Transportation and the Ohio Public Works Commission for the Intersection Improvements of Broad and James Project. This project consists of widening James Road both north and south of Broad Street to construct left and right turn lanes. Other improvements include replacing the traffic signal, relocating city power poles and power lines, as well as constructing a concrete medium, asphalt pavement, curb and gutter, curb and gutter inlets, storm sewer, sewer curb ramps, and pavement markings. This 2023 Capital Budget proposal includes $15 million in mobility safety improvements. This includes $817,000 for construction of pedestrian safety, Wallford Street, Sharbot Street, and Northtown Boulevard sidewalk project. This project will install sidewalk and filling gaps along both sides of Wallford Street from Beltrish Drive to Morris Road, and on Sharbot, Sharbot Drive from Tamarack Boulevard to Carahan Road, and Northtown Boulevard from Morris Road to Jonathan Court. Also included in mobility funds in 2023 is $1.4 million in design funding for the Bike Way Magnoughton Road project. This project involves the addition of pedestrian and bike facilities along Magnoughton Road from Main Street to Broad Street. These improvements include widening the roadway to add turn lanes at the intersection and the addition of lighting. The 2023 budget also includes $800,000 in design costs for the PED Safety 17th Avenue project. This project involves the replacement of curb and sidewalk along 17th Avenue from I-71 to Bill, Billiter Boulevard. These improvements include signal replacement and installation of bump outs. The 2023 budget proposal also includes $200,000 in construction, leveraging $2 million in CDBG funding or Community Development Block grant funds for the PED Safety Hiawatha Park Drive project. This project consists of design of pedestrian and bikeway improvements along Hiawatha Park Drive from Silver Drive and Velma Avenue, south of I-71, to East Hudson Street. The SGP will be added along the east side of Hiawatha Park Drive to the full project limits, and sidewalk will be added along the west side of Hiawatha Park Drive in any locations where no sidewalk exists currently. The 2023 Capital Improvements Budget also includes $6 million for refuse collection vehicles and containers to replace and update the division's fleet that serves 346,000 households every week. Some of this equipment will be dedicated to support the Clean Neighborhoods Initiative to address the persistent problem of illegal dumping in our neighborhoods. Lastly, looking ahead at our priorities for the capital improvements program or the capital improvements plan from 2024 to 2028, some of the major investments that we'll be continuing is investing in our Vision Zero Initiative at $5.3 million a year, or roughly $26.5 million over the five-year period. We'll also be funding $20 million each year in resurfacing, or roughly $100 million over that planned period of five years. Also, $6 million continuing mobility initiative that amounts to $30 million over the five-year period, as well as continuing our Bridge Rehab Program at $3.5 million per year, and $17 million over the five-year plan program. Again, I would like to thank council and the community for the opportunity to present Public Services' Capital Improvement Budget for 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I have one question. I see the chair down there has a question. One of the large improvement, one of the large allotments in this budget is for the LINKUS planning, $18 million set aside. And I just wanted to bring that, just raise that in tonight's hearing. That's something you'll start to hear the city talk a lot about. LINKUS is our mobility plan to help us grow as a community. It is a citywide effort to increase all of our mobility and how we move around, how we connect one another to bring dignity and allow for the growth to come to Columbus without putting more and more pressure on our roadways. Why I bring that up? Because the $18 million is a big number in this budget. Next year, we will be talking to Columbus voters about supporting a large levy. The levy will include parts of what Mr. Wenzel talked about. But one of the things that I think is really also important to, to, to raise is it also will fund millions and millions and millions of dollars worth of more sidewalks and streets and other improvements as well. So as we talk about better transit and more options, be thinking about the opportunities that will come when we talk about this levy next year around sidewalks for every community around central Ohio. It is a really big deal. We are laying the foundation for that work to start now. And so that, that's what that $18 million is getting us a head start. But the, the total levy will be around $8 billion over several, several years. But it will mean streets, sidewalks, parkways, bike lanes, dedicated bike lanes, just better mobility all around. In my opinion, it is the most important thing that we will do as a community, as a city, in the next 25 years. The most important thing because we know that we have this million people coming to Columbus in that period of time. We know that we can't add a million more cars to Columbus, or none of us will be able to get around anywhere. And so this is how we plan for that. And we have to do it soon. So I just wanted to raise that, if you were seeing that $18 million number. Know that we will start to talk about that a lot more with, with each and every one of you, because we'll need a lot of input and a lot of engagement as we get there. Chair?
Thank you, Council President. That was excellent. And the second point I also wanted to raise is we've been talking a lot about Vision Zero and our strategy around Vision Zero. It's really how we are thinking about reconstructing our roadways and reconstructing a lot of the road improvements that you've seen have taken a lot of the Vision Zero principles. And that is, Vision Zero quite simply is the idea that there are zero fatalities due to road crashes. And so tomorrow evening, I'll be holding a town hall at, or a hearing at, in council chambers, starting at 5:30. It will also be live online, so you can watch that as well if you want to learn more about the initiative and what it is that we are doing, because it's an all-in initiative for literally how we are planning and redesigning our streets across the city, also taking into account LINKUS and other improvements that we know we need to make as we look at the high injury network around the city.
Thank you. Councilmember, please.
Thank you. Assistant Director, talk, talk a little bit about speeding in the neighborhoods. A lot of people have concerns, like on Woodland and Brent now and others, where people just fly through the neighborhood. How do they get prioritization? How do we get traffic calming? What is the process to get, you know, specific streets to top the list?
Thank you, Councilmember Reimi, Council President Harden, members of council. Call 311 for sure. We track that. We log it. A lot of times, we'll create a traffic study, which I know we have a huge backlog right now. But we will go out and we will look at it and see how the speeding is being affecting traffic within the environment. And we'll look at some of these initiatives that Vision Zero is launching with the $5.2 million each year to help calm some of that traffic that's coming through at those high speeds. Is it bump outs? Could it be like speed humps? Any kind of things that we can do to improve and lower the speed limits within those neighborhoods?
Yeah, definitely. Good news on 17th. That was something I didn't, wasn't even aware of. How do I, you know, just for the good of the order, how do I go find out if, if my street's going to be repaved? Where do I go to look for that type of information?
Okay. Once we do the RFP,
Okay, once we do the RFP, to actually in the contract, we put a list out of all the exact streets that are going to be paved. I believe council puts it on the website as well as we put it on our website. So you can go there to see which street are in each one of those packages. We're currently in the design phase of Package Three, so we're developing those streets right now. Depending on funding, we might even have a Package Four this year. That hasn't happened for a while, but definitely you can find that within our website on Public Service or City Council.
And then talk a little bit about refuse. I mean, refuse, I mean, I'll make a statement that trash trucks now take, you know, in an inordinate amount of time to get delivered sans COVID. They've gone up tremendously and cost several hundred thousand dollars more than what they were. Six million dollars is great, but you know, we do have a lot of illegal dumping. We've got, you know, issues within each neighborhood. Could you talk a little bit about the further investment in the department, adding additional crews and what that's meant for the public?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Reamy. Yeah, we do, as Dan said, have a huge backlog of some of our vehicles. We currently are waiting on delivery of some of our trucks that we ordered in 2021. So just due to COVID, the supply chain, the supply chain issues are real, as well as the cost increases. We're seeing increases anywhere around fifty thousand dollars on each one of our refuse trucks. So you're basically talking about a three hundred thousand dollar refuse truck to a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar refuse truck now. So it's making that six million dollars smaller. We did make a significant investment last year, if you recall, Councilmember, of sixteen million dollars to bump up that number of refuse trucks that were going to hit the streets. And then earlier this year, as a part of the capital improvements budget, we added some additional personnel, thanks to the administration and council, to add another crew at each one of our refuse facilities or outpost to actually go out and fight and be dedicated to illegal dumping. Some of the six million dollars in this year's budget will buy the equipment to support that group.
Thank you very much, Assistant.
Thank you, Director. The next department to come before council is Department of Public Utilities and Director Lee.
Good evening, President Harden, members of council and members of the community. I'm happy to present the Department of Public Utilities 2023 Capital Improvement Budget. Our proposal is two hundred and eighteen million in proposed new funding and two hundred and five million in ongoing carryover projects. Our proposed 2023 to 2028 capital improvement program over the next six years is four point one billion. These dollars are driven largely by growth and development in the region. As mentioned, the Department of Public Utilities services its own debt from utility bill payments, and the majority of our projects are funded from city bonds and Ohio EPA loans. Our guiding principles are to provide the community with quality water, wastewater services, storm, and power services. We build and maintain critical infrastructure above ground and underground to support our growing population in central Ohio and provide the capacity to meet utility demands. We also ensure that we meet all EPA regulatory requirements and provide affordable rates and offer utility discount programs to customers. Some of the top projects on the North Side include the new construction of our fourth water plant and the transmission line associated with that, our ongoing efforts with Blueprint Columbus, continued street lighting upgrades, stormwater improvements to mitigate flooding, and general improvements to our Dublin Road and Hap Kermeen Treatment Plants here on the North Side. We have over four hundred and twelve million in planned projects on the North Side within nineteen Columbus communities. Just a snapshot of some of those projects here, we have close to sixty million in blueprint projects in the fifth-by-northwest area and in North Linden. We have several street lighting projects planned in the future in the Northland area and Olentangie West area. We have waterline projects planned near Hudson Street in Arcadia, in the University District, and along Lexington Avenue in the Milo Grogan area. Smart Street Lighting is a program that will be deployed over the next ten to twenty years, and this is a program where we plan to do one to two phases of upgrades in neighborhoods depending on funding levels. Each phase of smart street lighting will be about three million dollars, and with each phase, we'll replace around three thousand five hundred to four thousand lights. We'll upgrade those from the current high-pressure sodium lights up to LED lights. These will upgrade and improve safety in the neighborhood, improve aesthetics, allow for dimming capabilities, and reduce greenhouse gases with these upgrades. This next slide shows our planned construction of our fourth water plant and the associated transmission line on the northwest side of Columbus. These two projects combined are estimated to cost around eight hundred million and will provide an additional fifty million gallons per day or eighteen point two billion gallons of water per year. The new plant is expected to be online in 2029 and will create over three hundred construction jobs and thirty full-time jobs at the plant once operational. This new plant will help serve the development of the north and northeast side of the city. And finally, our Blueprint Columbus Program will continue in the next several years. Our target completion date is 2045 for that program per the EPA. It consists of four pillars as shown here on the slides. We have a green infrastructure component, a roof redirection component where we'll connect downspouts on your property to the stormwater system. We have a sump pump installation pillar, and we have a lateral lining program where we'll improve the integrity of the sewer lines. These efforts allow us to remove inflow and infiltration of rainwater into our sanitary system and help prevent sewer overflows. We've completed several projects to date in Clintonville and in Linden, and we've spent close to two billion dollars. The slide here shows all the blueprint areas highlighted in green, and we have a link here at the bottom of the presentation where you can go and actually see if blueprint's going to be in your neighborhood by street address. Members of council, members of the community, that is my presentation of the 2023 Capital Improvement Budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. I think Councilmember Dorance has a question. That's about Tim.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Lee, could you talk about, so eight hundred million dollars is a huge investment for the city to make into another water plant. Wanted to allow you an opportunity to talk a little bit more about why that is so important given the growth of Columbus. So if we were choose to do nothing right now, choose to not add an additional water plant, what would that mean for the system that we have right now? And what would that additional plan ensure that happens into the future, given, again, the significant investment that's being proposed here over the next, you know, sixty-eight years?
Thank you, President Protem Dorans. You know, at Department of Public Utilities, investing in infrastructure is something that we have to really plan ahead. We have to typically plan ten years ahead for these major infrastructure projects, and we do a lot of master planning. And just based on the population growth here in central Ohio and the intel coming in into the northeast side, the demands of the commercial entities coming in, some of these entities will be requiring anywhere from five million gallons to ten million gallons per day. On the North Side, we are largely served by our Hap Kermeen Water Plant on Morse Road. We also have our Dublin Road Plant serving the west side, and then we have our Parsons Avenue Plant. So allowing and improving the water supply and the water treatment capacity will allow for more commercial companies to come into the area. And so if we delayed, if we delayed improving this plant, it was on our plan about twenty years out, and so we've actually accelerated it. If we did delay it, the commercial entities couldn't come here, and we couldn't meet those demands.
So in other words, whether it's residential or businesses coming to Columbus, you know, we would not be in a position to allow those things to be built, constructed, grow, et cetera, just because we would not have the water supply based upon not having the additional plan? Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. Other question I have, we hear a lot of counsel from folks, and this is part of your presentation around street lighting. Many portions of the city do not have streetlights. You know, the plan here has converting current lights to LEDs, so I want to allow you the opportunity to talk about why that is important. And then to another question of if folks do not have street lighting within their neighborhood, how do they go about advocating for that with the department to make sure that future investments can be driven to those areas that currently do not have any current street lighting?
Thank you, President Protem Dorans. As far as streetlights converting to LEDs, the high-pressure sodium lights that we currently have right now, they're just not effective, they're not efficient, they cost more than LEDs. With LED technology in the control system that we'll be installing as part of the smart street lighting program, we'll be able to see where outages are. So you probably see some streetlights out currently. They've been out maybe for a long time on your street. So we'll be notified through this technology pretty much immediately, and then we can deploy our staff to make those replacements. Currently, we're relying on you to tell us. We also do some drive-bys to see what ones are out and replace those. So it's going to improve the lighting and illumination quality as well, and as mentioned, improve safety. As far as getting streetlights in your neighborhood, number one, the Division of Power has a limited budget. We have about five million dollars in capital dollars that we can disperse, so we have to balance that with our needs for our distribution system, upgrading circuitry. And after that, we've got just a limited amount of funding for brand-new street lighting projects. We can typically do maybe one to two a year. And so we have a prioritization plan that what residents can do is call the Division of Power. They can see if their project, if their street is on that prioritization plan. What we look at with that plan is, as far as formulating where we will install streetlights, we look at, you know, what type of pedestrian incidences have happened in the area, vehicle crashes, crime, population density, a lot of those factors. There is also the ability for residents to file a petition if you want lights on your road. You can go through the petition process and the assessment process where we'll install decorative lights on your street, and then you would have over ten years to pay off that assessment.
Thank you, Assistant Director. And last question, so one of the things that I think the department has been focused on, and rightfully so, is how do you build infrastructure, thinking through what is the effects of climate change on Columbus? Several of the wettest years on record in Columbus have been over the past five to ten years, which has seen your residential flooding in certain areas of the city just because the increase in the amount of heavy, heavy rain events that we've had. How is the department using their capital dollars to adapt and make our community more resilient from a planning standpoint to make sure that when those severe rain events happen, that we're doing the best we can from an infrastructure standpoint to mitigate some of those effects on neighborhoods?
Thank you, President Protem Dorans. As far as climate change is a reality that we're all facing, and the impact on infrastructure is a consideration in the department, particularly with flooding and heavy rains, and that really kind of ties back to our blueprint program. Really, the genesis of that was how do we, how do we deal with all this rainwater going down and getting infiltrating into our sanitary lines and going down to our treatment plants? What would happen is it would go down to our treatment plants in such large volumes, and it's continuing to do that, and we would have to discharge and overflow into the river. So what we've done is we've built deep tunnels. We've got the Oars Tunnel, which was constructed, which captures a lot of that rainwater right now. So we've been improving all of the stormwater lines. We've been lining them so we can convey all that stormwater to this tunnel and then treat it over time. We have a new tunnel being built along Gowdy Field in that area. That's another deep tunnel, which will help capture all that flooding. And so those are some of the things that we're doing. Those are improvements to help make the system more resilient and to mitigate flooding. Neighborhood flooding will continue to be a concern. Our stormwater budget is around thirty-five million dollars a year that we can dedicate. We do have several neighborhood improvements planned. We do rely on your feedback through 311 if there are street flooding situations going on. After heavy rains, we try to get out there just to clear blockages. Blockages do occur in those inlets, and we will get out there as soon as possible to mitigate that situation.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Please.
Assistant Director, could you also address the issue of solar power? Is that even in consideration for street lighting?
At this time, solar power for street lighting is, we have not considered that at this point. We are looking at solar in another fashion where we're installing some solar power arrays at our land on our treatment plants. And so those efforts are currently ongoing, but at this point, we are still hardwiring, I guess you could say, our streetlights.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Final department to present to this hearing is Recreation and Parks and Mr. Steve Hyden.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about the Recreation and Parks 2023 Capital Improvement Budget. Our new funding request for '23 is sixty-four million. In addition, we are requesting the authority to spend a hundred million in ongoing project funding from prior years carried over into 2023. And the following slides tonight will demonstrate some of our major projects in design and also starting the construction phase yet this year. In addition, we'll discuss our future plans for the use of this funding authority. This funding authority will help take care of our many existing assets. That's four hundred and fifteen parks and twenty nature preserves, eight outdoor pools, one indoor aquatics facility, six golf courses, thirty-two community centers and facilities for arts, sports, outdoor recreation, and therapeutic recreation. Recreation of Parks has a long-term goal that provides all residents the ability to be within a ten-minute walk of park or trail. Our major 2023 and 24 projects, Kilborn Run Sports Park. It's a soccer complex and regional tournament destination. Will also provide a playground, shelter, and trails in the Northland community. It's a twenty-five million dollar project. It's going to commence construction in '24 and be complete in 2025. Mock Park Pickleball Complex Construction. This project will provide a three-season tournament-scale pickleball complex in northeast Columbus. It's a two-point-nine million dollar project with twelve courts and a fall '24 construction schedule. Maloney Park Improvement Construction. Will provide a new playground and fitness stations, demolition and relocation of a shelter, increased lighting, improved parking and traffic control. That's a one-point-five million dollar project for the spring of '24. Whetstone Park Improvement Construction, Phase One. This is renovations to sports fields, renovation of restroom and a pond, replacement of open-air shelter, and that's a three million dollar construction project. It'll start in the spring of '24. Indoor Aquatics Center Design. We're going to start the design phase of a new indoor aquatics and community facility in northeast Columbus with an estimated design budget of five point eight million dollars. Our future projects, 2024 through 2028, the West Case Park Construction. This is the development of a fifty-six-acre community park in northwest Columbus with an estimated ten million dollar budget. Tuttle Pool Construction. Demolition of an existing pool and construction of a new outdoor aquatics facility in the University District. Has an estimated twelve million dollar construction cost. It's currently in design. Whetstone Park Improvements, Design and Construction for Phase Two. This will include improvements to the Hollenbeck Drive Park Entrance, construction of a basketball court, and that has an estimated construction of cost of one point one million. Indoor Aquatics Facility Construction. It's construction phase of a new indoor aquatics and community facility in northeast Columbus with an estimated sixty million dollar budget. Also, the Linden Green Line Design. It's the design phase for the construction of a seven-mile regional trail that will bring connectivity to trails, park, and active recreation for the hundred and thirty thousand residents living within a ten-minute walk of this area. Design phase is estimated cost of six hundred thousand dollars. We have many ongoing Recreation of Parks priority projects citywide that are not specifically listed by name and location. We have tree canopy preservation and expansions. We have greenway trail surface improvements, construction of new trails, Big Walnut, Sciota, East Moore, Linden, and Big Run areas. Facility renovations enhancements, that includes lighting, HVAC, roofs, plumbing, and interior finishes. And then existing park improvements, security upgrades, and also ADA improvements. We focus on accessibility and maneuverability at facilities and parks, but we're also increasing our accessible playgrounds. accessible playgrounds. Our Parkland Acquisition and Development Goal is to acquire an average of 100 acres a year as Parkland Reserve and to develop an average of two parks each year. Again, I thank you for this opportunity to speak about our 2023 capital budget, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions from our colleagues? Well, we are now going to move to the public speaking portion of the agenda. We have 13 speakers. And so just so that we can respect each other, I'm going to be kind of judicious about moving us through this. Where is my team? Where are we doing this at? So, okay. If you would come to, when I, when I call your name, if you would come to this microphone right here, where Mr. Carlos is walking over to, we'll have three minutes to present. And we will start with Ms. Jennifer Chamberlain.
Is there any way to relax before this?
I will move, sorry. Thank you so much, Ms. Chamberlain. The next speaker to come before this hearing is Diane Middleton.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity, President Harden and other members of the community. I've been a resident of Cumberland Ridge, which is a neighboring community, from 1989 to 2003. My concern is that there is increased commercial traffic on Cassidy Avenue between Agla Road to the I-670 entrance. I've highlighted some of these points. New construction of an apartment building closer to Agla, and I'm not sure if there will be a stoplight for the entry and exit for that. Traffic from the post office includes 16- or 18-wheel trucks making left turns onto Cassidy Avenue with a very narrow turning radius. Newly constructed Frito-Lay facility also has increased traffic on Cassidy Avenue. New construction on Steltzer Road should not be allowed to use Cassidy Avenue to reach I-670 or other points on 270 or 71. I'm not sure if this construction is a factory or office building. There are no continuous sidewalks along Cassidy Avenue. There need to be sidewalks from the I-670 entry and exit up to Agla Road. School buses have a long wait to turn left or right when leaving Cumberland Ridge at Hudson Street and the Cumberland Woods Drive to Cassidy Road. Traffic entering and exiting the Columbus School for Girls Kirk Campus, which is at Cassidy and Cumberland Woods Drive, also presents congestion and safety issues. I'd like to propose that traffic of trucks be diverted from Cassidy Avenue on to Steltzer Road. Installation of sidewalks for pedestrians from I-670 to Agla Road, and installing a stoplight at some point along Cassidy Avenue would be helpful. I've had a family member lose a car and be jammed into the car by a turning truck at Cassidy and Agla, and it was a car that was almost paid for. She had to get a new one because it couldn't be repaired. And the school bus issue, to me, is more prominent because I have a young relative who catches a bus out this way. Thank you.
Your, your advocacy, I think it's, it's really well-seeded. Director, would you speak to, is there a philosophy around Cassidy Avenue? I remember back way when I was chair of Public Service, we were talking about Cassidy Avenue and talking with several folks in this room, specifically about the exit out of Cumberland. I know we did some things to make sure that folks couldn't pass when somebody was stopped to turn into Cumberland. But what are we, what are we talking, what are we thinking about when we think about Cassidy, specifically when we think about sidewalks? Because I will say that driving here today, I was kind of uncomfortable seeing kids walk down now, especially because there's construction going on. They're, they really are getting closer, closer and closer to the street. Do we have a philosophy around sidewalks on that stretch of Cassidy?
Thank you, Council President Harden. We are actually currently in the design phase for Cassidy Avenue. It's actually going to be broken up into two different phases. We actually secured some federal funds in order to, to do the construction of this. We're in the, we're currently in the process of doing design on Cassidy. I'm not sure exactly the, the exact limit of that, but I'd be happy to talk after this to get more information on those limits to see if it coincides with the project that we're working on. But we are looking into it, and included with that would be sidewalks, so.
Thank you. Chair, do you have any questions? Okay. We'll get that to the, I'd be really, I'm interested in that project as well. Thank you. The next speaker to come before Council is BJ White. BJ, welcome back to Council.
Thank you, President Harden, members of Council, and Department Directors. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard by the Finance Committee about much-needed, long-overdue improvements to the area I have served as Clintonville Area Commissioner for District Nine. The improvement shall be appreciated by all pedestrians, cyclists, motorists, and personal electric mobility devices for just under a mile stretch of Indianola Avenue north of Morse Road to Lincoln Avenue. Linking our neighborhoods throughout the Columbus area gives people a way to connect. It minimizes the challenges of those families who do not have nearby rec. centers, libraries, and other life destinations. It gives pathways to those who want to visit family and friends but have limitations due to transportation access. If we have learned anything from COVID, human connectivity is a matter of mental and emotional wellness. The City of Columbus has boasted of sustainability, green spot initiatives, as well as get-fit promotions. This is the most impactful action that can contribute to all of these initiatives singly in one fell swoop. Since 2017, I have hosted several community meetings during my tenure in public service, but I have failed to demonstrate to the powers that be the importance of our area north of Morse Road along the Indianola Corridor. To improve this nine-tenths of a mile, roadway's safety and ease for access for all of its users. I cannot stress enough the desired improvements needed for safety, traffic calming, cyclists, pedestrians, and motorists. Here are some of those challenges. First, the stretch of road has a little less than one mile is on the bike trail between the Alum Creek Connector and the Olin Tangi Trail Connector. Google Maps recognizes this, but the City of Columbus doesn't seem to. It is heavily traveled by cyclists. It is a two-lane road that is 45 miles per hour with no berm. It has less than four inches outside of the painted edge line with no improved surface and loose gravel. A motorist traveling 45 miles per hour in either or both directions concurrently cannot safely permit the cyclist their share of the lane. I observe this several times weekly on my way home with near misses and a lot of horn honking. Second, the rear entry to the Ohio School for the Deaf has an entry, which is a school entrance passage without any signage or speed limitations on Indianola Avenue. I have seen staff and buses utilize this as an exit and entry without any road markings or signals. It is difficult to believe that it has never properly been marked. Third, the railroad crossing with Norfolk Southern and CSX that runs parallel to this stretch of Indianola Avenue has no allowances for safe bicycle or pedestrian passage over the railroad crossing, which is also the Alum Creek Connector to the Olin Tangi Trail for those traveling east-westbound. Also, it connects Salem Village and Sharon Heights. I've seen people get off their bikes and walk them across the tracks to be sure they do not crash. It is difficult to see people walking their baby strollers as the infant is bumbling about while mom or dad is trying to navigate the railroad crossing safely. Fourth, most recently, there have been new housing opportunities that have been created on Sinclair Road, and, and the area's density will soon be optimized. During this construction, Sinclair Road has been closed between I-71 and Lincoln Avenue. Due to this closure, there's been a significant uptick in motorist traffic, which has been very tricky for everyone who share the road on that stretch of Indianola. I am certain that folks who will occupy this housing will want to enjoy Sharon Meadows' 10-acre park that we enjoy, and other neighborhood destinations just west of the railroad tracks.
Ms. BJ?
Yes.
We are having trouble with our timer, but I think we actually, we gave you about four minutes right now. So if that is a written testimony, would you please get it to us? It is very specific, so we want to be able to follow each one of those points for you. Thank you. And could one of my team members come stand up here and, and serve as the timer so that?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. BJ. Please.
Assistant Director, could you talk a little bit about the, I mean, there's multiple things in here, but one thing I heard over again was just around cycling, and we have a new cycling, a bike plan for the city. Can you talk a little bit about that, just what's coming? And very soon, we're going to share it more broadly.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Berrosojapedia. Yes, we had recently entered into a contract with a firm to help us develop our next phase of the bike plan. So the one we currently had is probably, I would think, over 13, 14 years old, is the Bicentennial Bike Plan. We're updating that now. So we have a consultant that's in, and there'll be a lot of community outreach. So there'll be a lot of discussions about biking within the community. So you'll see that coming in the next few months as we're rolling out this new contract.
And, and part of that is also helping us to connect some of these.
Yes, absolutely.
So that will address some of the issues that we're continuing to see. I mean, what's most challenging, and, you know, saying this upfront, and I think I'm stating the obvious because we all see and feel this, is that with our traffic solutions, sorry, Carlos, with our traffic solutions, they take a long time. And I know that that's an unsatisfying answer, but partially, it's part of the design phase. It's helping to get community input and then actually implementing the process. And that's also overlapping with some of the other process, or some of the other projects that we have in place. So I wanted to make sure that we share that because folks, especially for pedestrians and cyclists, I know that we hear you. This is something that has been a challenge. I mean, Columbus was built with, you know, we had buggies, and then we had cars, and then we started to move beyond cars, and people started to move on foot, and they started to move on bikes, and we have not been friendly to those most vulnerable users. And so I think that's something that we recognize. So this plan will not address probably everything, but it's going to address a lot. This, I wanted to just say, in addition to calling 3-1-1 because we do keep track of those, if there are specific concerns that folks have, please also reach out, feel free to reach out to my office. I'm happy to come out to area commissions. I'm happy to do a roundtable, working with the Department of Public Service. We've put forth dollars towards tactical urbanism, and what that is, is strategies so that we can get roadway improvements out on the streets more quickly. And so sometimes they're permanent, or semi-permanent, while a longer-term solution is coming out, and we're doing that along Lockborn. We've done that in other parts of the city. So I would just say, as a point of advocacy, you know, this is also another avenue. Let's have a conversation if there's particular places where there is something that we can partner with the Department of Public Service to get a solution out there a little quicker. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Chair, next speaker to come for Council is B. Tobler. Ms. B., welcome to Council.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to be really short. B. Tobler with North Central Area Commission, have been Commissioner now for many, many years. Just a couple of things. I want to talk about the Lindell area, which is next to the American Edition, which is in the southeast corner of 17th and Joyce. We are now becoming that forgotten area. So we're now 57 years in getting infrastructure, you know, things for our streets. Our lighting is horrible. We are not looking like the AmeriCrest that the city has said that we're supposed to be. So we're supposed to be one area. Let's be one area. We desire to be one. The other problem is the trucks that are coming from Windsor and coming down Windsor. There's starting to be a lot of accidents there. We are thankful, and it was very refreshing to hear about the sidewalks are becoming, are going to be coming everywhere. In addition to that, I wanted to hit on Traylee Center. We never can forget about Traylee Center. A lot of work needs to be done, and for our residents there, it is a community hub for us that does training for the children and hosts a variety of other things. So we do want to get some funding for that as well. So I don't want to forget that. It's been a longstanding, those that know, and I know that President Harden knows, Ms. Marie, and we've done a lot and a lot of work. Hard things have gone in trying to get the housing and everything. We do appreciate all that you have done on that side, but I'm saying, let's move over now, not forget the Lindell Edition, because I'm here to appeal to you on your hearts and form, and advocate for my neighbors and my neighborhood. The affordable housing is a good idea, but here's the problem. You're building them too high in our neighborhoods. They're too high, and they're constantly coming at us. North Central Area Commission don't mind having affordable living. We realize there is a 27% deficit of people that are coming here to move and need somewhere to live, and we want everybody to be able to live affordable. So lower some of those down. We have mostly homeowners in our area, and not only that, but we also are asking for senior housing in that affordable living. We have a lot of seniors, people that are getting older now, that their kids are now wanting to take over their homes, but they don't want to go far to visit their mother or their father. So if we had something like that, and, and the aesthetics of the neighborhood aren't three stories high, there's nothing here that's three stories high other than Ohio Dominican, and basically Ohio Dominican. We still continue to be a desert. If you're going to bring the, the people here, let's see about some places to eat, some places, let's advocate for that, places to eat, some stores to shop at. That's all I really have. I just want to make sure that we get those things in. So thank you all. I know that you all work hard as city leaders. I really appreciate the things that you do do. And then, John Lee, I did want to say to you, I would like to see that blueprint get out a little bit better to the people, because people don't know. I'm only one, and I'm constantly advocating for all those people that don't know about it to get in it, because it's a great program for anybody that don't know about it. Please visit, visit the City of Columbus website because a lot of things are coming, coming our way for the blueprint. So thank you very much, and I hope you all have a good, safe evening.
Thank you, Ms. Toby. I, we definitely hear the advocacy, specifically on the Traylee Center. I think this council has been on the record to make, made a commitment to support what, what will come there, what will be there. We just want to continue to work with the community partners to figure out what that will be. But, but they're, obviously, that's personal to a lot of us, that we continue on Ms. Marie's work in that neighborhood. And there've been a lot of investments, a lot of investments in American Edition, a lot more to still come to finish out that commitment. And we asked the Public Service to pull some of the, the projects for the whole Britino area, because we've been hearing some very specific advocacy over the last two days to my office. So I just want to make sure that, that we're communicating those back out, very specifically what those infrastructure improvement projects that to come are. And we'll get those out to the commission. Thank you, Ms. B. Next speaker to come before Council is Ann Valentine.
Good evening, President Harden and members of City Council. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Ann Valentine. I reside behind Mifflin Senior High School. I see that there's only $50 million allocated to the housing. I see that there's only $50 million allocated to the housing issue at this time, and I understand the 50 million, but without any graphs, surveys, researches, that amount is not enough to even scrape the tip of this iceberg called housing. Our homeless population continues to grow, seniors being displaced, people that have lived in the same place for 12 years, paying $750 a month rent for two bedrooms, and now they have to pay 1,200. So I need to understand affordable housing. Our homeless population continues to grow daily, which includes our seniors, our veterans, middle-aged youth, and children. You simply have to review who's at food markets, food giveaways, and that continues to grow annually. Housing has gone from a single-family home to, with homes to three generations, and if you don't believe that, just go walk through Linden, and you'll see the grandmother, the mother and her kids, and the kids' kids. Homeless shelters are constantly overfilled, and there are no vacancies, and when they have no vacancies, they put these people in the hallways. So you've got two kids, you had to move because your rent tripled, and you go to a shelter, and you have to sleep in a hallway with your kids. Yes, we're going to build more homes, apartments, et cetera, but again, they have to be affordable and not market value, and sometimes we have to review those income levels. We should also, and this is a suggestion, we've got a lot of our vendors, our friends, whatever you want to call them, outside investors coming in and taking over apartment complexes, and there are people that have lived there 10 years, 15 years, five years, maybe there should be something that the city can do to give them like a grandfather clause, where they'll be locked in at that rent for X number of years, or until they decide to move. Because it's going to come to the point where they're going to be in the homeless shelter, and they aren't going to have any place to stay. I mean, if you knew, you see what I see up here on the north end. You should be only, you should be aware of the housing issues, not only at the low-income level, but all the issues that are affecting veterans, veterans with disabilities, seniors, children's infants, and adult with families. Right now, you've got these wonderful places that you can go to rent, three-bedroom, you know, a bath, finished, you know, basement, I'm almost finished, and there is nothing in there, there's nothing there but a hole in the basement where the sump pump goes, there's no stove, and there's no refrigerator, and the windows are boarded up, but they'll rent it. All I have to say is like, you need to get into the trenches. I say surprise some landlords, I say the ones that say they have affordable housing, do a sneak visit. You'll be surprised at what people are being offered. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine. That's what you call a housing advocate, and we need more and more and more of those. You went very specific. The truth is, what you just talked about was not a northside issue. Every neighborhood, every community around this country, or around this city is dealing with the exact same thing that you articulated. I don't think I heard a falsehood in anything that you articulated about rents being raised. I wish our Chair Faber was here, she was here last night, and we spent a lot more time speaking on the Housing for All initiatives that council is moving forward. You spoke on one initiative that would cap rents being raised. Trust me, council would love to do that. When we started to work on that, the State House stepped in and stopped us, and said that's illegal to do that. That would be called a rent control in the state of Ohio, and they made it allow, they banned, barred us from doing that. But your advocacy is critically important, we need more advocates, because what Ms. B. was talking about in terms of heights in communities, and what you're talking about in terms of building more, they're not incongruent. We can, as we, with everybody, I hope everybody is engaged in, is our zoning conversations about how do we use the zoning code, and the new zoning code, to encourage more housing, but also to support the types of, different types of neighborhoods. It's all connected. Now, I was going to talk about Link Us, but I don't want to talk, I'm a secret, here to listen, but all of these things are connected, there's a lot of good work. Is there anything, there's a lot that Ms. Valentine hit on, is there anything that you wanted to raise about this capital budget that maybe could address anything that Ms. Valentine brought up?
I certainly echo everything that you said, and I think that is, a holistic approach is what we have to take, and this capital budget is part of that broader strategy. But if you would have me, I would be happy to come out to your community and have that deeper conversation. I'd come out anytime, so you let me know.
That's awesome. Thank you so much, Ms. Ross. Next speaker to come before council is Deborah Banks.
President Harden, thank you, and I want to thank all contributors this evening, both for questions and content, it's been very informative for me. I'm a Shepherd resident, which is a part of the North Central Area Commission, and Shepherd is a really small community just south of the Ohio Dominican University on Sunbury Road. And so, being so small, I think we kind of get overlooked, but I think this is a great opportunity for us to be included in some things that are already planned, like along the Leonard Avenue corridor and that area there, because we're just south of that area there. So I'd like to make two asks, if I could, in terms of inclusion, one, from an economic standpoint, development standpoint, and then just a couple from safety. But we had our library moved from the south side of Nelson Road to the north side of Nelson Road about seven years ago, and a part of that move was the development of three parcels of land. And right now, only the library has been developed, but there's two other parcels of land that the community is interested in developing in terms of a park, and making it included with the Hayden Park area, which could really make it a destination area. The other nice thing about the park area there is it is, we do have access to the Allen Creek Trail right there. So the development of that area could really be a destination for our greater communities there, I'd say at least 10 communities around us, within a five-mile radius would benefit from the development of that particular area, if we could somehow consider including that in your work. The next thing I want to start working on is safety, speaking on a safety. The Fifth Avenue and Nelson Road intersection there that gives access to the library is a real troubling area. A lot of accidents, and it's very difficult for youth to get from the Shepherd community over to the library. So some sort of study or understanding of how we could make that a safer area, even if we looked at the elementary school, which is now up and operating for the past two to three years, if we put a light down at Walcut and Fifth Avenue there, it would channel the Shepherd community through the center of the community, they could walk down Walcut up to Ridge Avenue, to then cross Nelson more safely, and be able to avoid that Fifth and Nelson, the major intersection there. So that could be a possible workaround until you get your study or greater information available to you. The other thing is the bike trail. While it's wonderful to have access to it, I actually had a major crash on the bike trail, and I was fortunate enough to be able to ride out, but what concerned me was that there are no safety regulators there. There's no mile markers, there's no panic buttons, safety isn't available to you, so I couldn't have called someone to say, hey, I'm at mile marker four, or I'm east of mile marker two, and come and get me.
That was actually really, a really good point. I don't, I hate to cut you off, we still have...
Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. If you have more, and if it's written, we will even take it, just to email what you just have in your phone, we want to make sure that we are cataloging everything that you are bringing to us today. Director Lee, is there anything you have on the, not Lee, I apologize, Highland?
If you could, ma'am, if you could, please see me after this, and I'll get your contact information. I'm very familiar with this, those properties that you were talking about, that parkland. I'd like to send you the information, and we could talk something through.
I have to run, but I am going to turn the hearing over to the very capable, my president pro tem of council, Councilmember Doran's, to pick up. We are on 8 of 13, so we're almost there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Council President. We have, the next speaker to come for council is Mr., I think, William Dotson. And with someone with a last name that's sometimes hard to pronounce, please forgive me if I mispronounce your last name. Mr. Dotson, floor is yours, sir.
Yes, my name is William Dotson. I've been a resident of this region the last 40-some years, actually coming from Brittany Hills to Framingham, and where I am, in McCutcheon Crossing, in McCutcheon Place. So I have personally surveyed all of the logistical issues out here. I work in development, I work for the State of Ohio Development Department, and so I started looking at the fact that there was no development taking place here when development was starting. I was on the Area Commission, I was chairman, we worked with Mr. Wexner, he told us what the plan was. We tried to get the city to see, well, here's your opportunity to address all these other issues. Some of them, you've touched on, pedestrian safety, any of these roads is a hazard and a death trap, because they have no shoulder, they have no sidewalk, there are very few lights to cross. You talk about Agler, you name it. Sunbury Road is the most scenic road in the city. I met my wife years ago, I fell in love with the road. I mean, so that's why I've been hooked into that road the entire time I've been here. But I'd like to say, then, and I've worked with every administration, so I tend to be apolitical, doesn't matter whether you're Democrat or Republican, you're a person, you live in a thriving community, more likely you live in one that's completely indifferent than this. And so to come out here, you see it for yourself, and I've talked with council folks, et cetera, that said, wow, there's a lot of nice land here, there's this, that, and the other. I just think we need to take this kind of discussion into a working, planning charrette, and get the resources of the Development Department, city and county, because we have an overlap. Part of the challenge is that if you go west of here, you're in Clinton Township, you're Mifflin Township first, then Clinton Township. Our church over there on Agler Road is in both, and Columbus, so you tell me how that's supposed to work. I mean, you can appeal to one for one problem, you appeal to another for another problem, and maybe you get it resolved, but you don't get the bigger problem. And to me, the biggest problem that we've had is the, by not addressing these issues, is access to opportunity. When we first met with Mr. Wexner, when I was on the Area Commission, when he laid it out, it was as clear as, you know, daylight, that for all the thousands of families here, all the thousands of young folks in high school then, in college then, this would be their ticket to work at all of these new businesses coming in up there. Some of those businesses, he took to my old hometown, down in Huntington, West Virginia. I went to Marshall University. They hooked up with the college there on that development, because it meant trying to pump life into that city, which had kind of fallen off substantially. So I encourage you to create a process to tap the energy that's here, to empower these folks. You don't, you don't need planners except to guide and interpret planning concepts to them, but they know what the needs are, they know what the problems are, they know what they're, what they'd like to see. And it can't just be called a warm and fuzzy session, and it's all over and no results. Every one of your area plans should be available out here for these meetings. And like I said, they all say the same thing, but they do say what needs to happen, but there's no addendum on there, that we're going to do this in year one, this in year two, this in year five. If we find a way to fund this, we'll answer the issue of commercial development out here, if we find a way of, I can go on for days, but the opportunity is, our folks need the same commitment other neighborhoods have had. And a lot of them have had a lot of the folks with capacity there to drive it, and they've had political clout to drive it. I don't know, we might have to try the political thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. And I think one of the really key parts of, I think, the points that you made, so we're here tonight talking about the capital improvement budget, that's a one-year planning process, right? And what I think, one of the really good things that has come out of council having these hearings on the community for, God, I think, six, seven years now, is that we have the Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP, which is that five-year process, that's a much broader view, where the investments are going over that five-year period, and millions and millions of dollars that have been directed in specific years have come out of conversations like this, going back to that five-year planning process. And I don't want to speak for the departments, and feel free if anyone wants to jump in here, but I think one of the things to your point, Mr. Dotson, is that when we talk about these things layering on top of one another, because you have to have the infrastructure investments to be able to spur, whether it's economic development, or housing development, or just livability for folks within that area, you know, we're sort of bifurcated from time to time. Sometimes in the past, like, the Department of Public Service doesn't necessarily talk to recreation parks, which maybe doesn't talk to Department of Public Utilities. I think what we're trying to do with that Capital Improvement Plan, that five-year process, is really bring down some of those barriers, and I think you articulated very well the reasons for doing that. And not going to say we're perfect by any stretch, but that's the goal, and I think being able to be here tonight, because, again, if folks are bringing us a good idea today, unlikely that we're going to be able to get that in necessarily this budget this year, but this is how we make that longer-term plan, to make sure that when we come back out here a year from now, and we say, that idea we heard a year ago, we're actually being able to do it this year, or we're able to tell you when that's happening. Because I know that's a huge frustration that folks have around sort of this planning process, and rightfully so.
I'd like to say one more thing. We're doing over 50 million dollars worth of renovation on two projects just east of here, Providence Glen and Corbin Commons. Corbin Commons, nine units, elderly properties, Glen is a family development, all at the same time, and if you put the money on the infrastructure about Agler Road, we'd make it safer for the people that already have been living there all this time, and in the future, if everybody, if we could get retail up here, and sidewalks and curbs and all that would be ideal too, so that they don't have to go a zillion miles to get basements. They maybe only can shop once a month. We do a lot of food distribution there, too.
I appreciate that. The next speaker to come before council is Mr. James Williams. Mr. Williams, floor is yours, sir.
I would appreciate you allowing me to speak this evening, but Mrs. Posner, she spoke to what I was talking about. Somerset needs sidewalks, they need policing, they need traffic lights, you know? I have sit here since 6 o'clock and heard people talk about every other neighborhood but Somerset, and Cumberland Ridge, and all the surrounding areas. We need help here, we're taxpayers, you understand? And that's all I had to say, that I really think that we are a forgotten community, this area here. So that's all I got to say, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and that's the whole point of us being here tonight, is to have that kind of conversation. So thank you for being here and being an advocate. The next speaker to come for council is Ms. Lisa G. Brown.
Hello, I'm going to be brief. I live in American Edition, and at Marie Moreland Park, we need cameras. I walk every morning, and this morning, me and my husband saw a couple in a car on Dewey and Petro Alley doing some things they probably should have been doing at home. They drove off, because, of course, I looked in the car. Piggybacking on B. Tobler, Tray Lee Center, I used to tutor in Tray Lee Center years ago, and looking at it now kind of breaks my heart, because it's there unused. It's the, one of the oldest buildings there. My grandfather was a volunteer fireman. My mom, 75, will be 76, was born out there. So like B. Tobler said, just seven years ago, we got sidewalks and curbs. My grandmother used to fuss and say, they charging me for sewage, and I don't have sewage and curbs, so. Piggyback on B. Tobler, her side needs sidewalks, new streets as well, because they did combine it as AmeriCrest. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. The next speaker to come before council is Ms. Tiffany White. I believe Commissioner White is not with us. The next speaker we have for council is Commissioner Williams.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Asmaara Williams, with the North Central Area Commissioner, and I have a long list. So in regards to development, we want to know how many units are going to be scheduled to be built this year, in addition to affordable housing, like, how many units we expect to have? The Homeport Project, I reside in American Edition, we were pretty much promised a complete neighborhood, and there was an expectation of 125... and twenty-five homes. I don't even think we have seventy-five completed. So my ask is that we get at least five more homes built in American Edition, single-family homes for individuals. In regards to safety, the summer focus of parks and recs and pools. I know you follow 3-1-1 requests, but I am specifically asking that the parks in North Central be covered, such as the Hayden Park, because it's very hidden off the street. You'll drive past it, and there's a lot of prostitution that goes on in that park. With Amvet, you have prostitution and drug usage and transactions. Marie Moreland Park, we have issues of people staying way past park hours, parties going on to one, two o'clock in the morning. We have video footage, pictures, and I have plenty of people in the community who will supply that information. But we just need that police presence to continue through our community this summer. Let's see. And this is for Councilmember Remy. I would like to have some more information about the block watch funding, if possible, for our community. For public service, I have the traffic light, specifically at Britton Allen Woodward. We have asked, we fought to maintain that light. Unfortunately, we were told we weren't able to keep it, since that we've had numerous accidents, which is on record, as well as a fatality. We've even had police that patrol that area say that they wish that light was back and that we're willing to come testify about that. So I think even from a community standpoint, that light really does need to go back in just for the public safety of everyone. And the stop sign, excuse me. Also, the bridge, since you said that there was going to be funding for a bridge work, Fifth Avenue Bridge in Woodland. We've been speaking about this for a number of years. I know it was a federal issue at one point, but we have yet to have any resolve. We have rebarb coming out of that bridge. You can walk under it, it's not safe. And I understand that the city technically doesn't own it, but it's still, it's affecting our residents. So we need some resolve to get that taken care of. In regards to the pickleball field that you plan on putting in at Mock Road, at the Mock Park, what will happen with the Little League, because it displaces the football team? Sorry, y'all. And I do have questions about the flooding at the Alum Creek, because it makes it impassable. So are there going to be funds to address that? And I'll have everything written up, but sorry, I'm out of time. But we have a laundry list of issues that I wanted to bring from the community, from North Central to council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I think we have a number of things that are in there that are actually very specific capital budget questions. And Commissioner, I'll make sure that I have my staff reach out to you probably tomorrow to make sure that we get the testimony, because again, I think there's multiple things that are addressed either in the capital budget this year or sort of moving forward. And then there's, I think, a number of things in your testimony that are beyond the capital budget, that are things that, again, whether it's funding for block watch or other things, that we want to make sure that we're well looped in with the commission, to make sure that we're giving you the information they need. Yep. Councilmember Brose Dippia.
Yes, I just wanted to do just one other quick PSA. We started a program called 614 Beautiful. You can go to the website, 614beautiful.org. And that is for small grants between ten to twenty thousand dollars to do some of the, it's both placemaking, it's for pocket parts, it's for beautification, it's for places within the community. It's actually giving money to the community to remove some of the barriers, to get some of the things done. So a lot of it is like beautification projects, but I just wanted to put that out there because some of the things that folks mentioned, where if it doesn't squarely fall in capital, the capital budget, there are other opportunities that we can look at to figure out how do we, we're working with the Neighborhood Design Center, so even if area commission, well, community groups, because area commissions can apply, but if community groups within the community or nonprofit applies, the Neighborhood Design Center can actually help you with the logistical part of whatever those plans are. So I just want to put that out there as an additional resource for folks for some of the things that we're talking about this evening.
Thank you, councilmember. I appreciate that. The next speaker to come before the hearing is Mr. Aaron Newman. Mr. Newman?
Thank you, all. Thank you, members of council and city staff for coming out. I can be pretty quick here, I know we're nearing the end. I'll just cut back to reemphasize the far northwest priorities that were shared at last summer's hearings and have been shared for a few years now, namely, the continuation of sidewalks south of Hard Road, excuse me, on Smokey Row, between Hard Road and Snoffer. The sidewalks were completed north of Hard Road several years ago, greatly expanding access and walkability in that part of the town. It'd be great to see that done at the south side. We would also appreciate the expansion and improvement of Billingsley Road, an ongoing concern for many years. And also, we are pretty underparked and under green space for as many folks as we have up there. We have Hard Road, which has a great amount of space, fairly underdeveloped, if we could get some improvements there. And long term, we need a recreation center. We have tens of thousands of folks up there, nothing like this, no community meeting area that we can utilize. So I would love to talk about getting that into the plan over the next few years. I know it's a big investment, but it's one that's overdue for our residents up in the far northwest. And then, once we get all those done, we'd love some more streetlights, we could use a police substation up there. We've got a lot of other things we'd love to ask for, once we get those priority items done. And also, I didn't hear anything specific about the far northwest. I know we just heard a sample of things, so if there was anything specific along those lines, I would appreciate hearing that, too. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. I want to pause and ask, Steve from Recreation and Parks, so one of the things that the department has done is start to reserve funds for land acquisition when they present themselves. I mean, one of the things that, I think, it's something that's of interest to council and certain administration, is the preservation of as much green space within the city as we can get. And that's something that's really important to do right now, considering how fast the city is growing, and that's sort of balancing out with the need for housing and other things. But when land does become available, and it makes sense, again, to get that green space preserved for residents to be able to enjoy, we also have to have the funds to buy it, right? No one's just going to give us that land for free. And I want to allow the department to talk about sort of the strategy around having the funds to do that, and how they sort of look at those investments, because those are specific capital budget investments that are made. Steve?
Definitely. We're always looking for area out there, that side of town. We're aware of the need of the rec center. Again, I'd like to get your contact information after this, so I could get all your concerns. But yes, we set aside capital funding. We call it a quick strike. If a piece of land comes available, we want to get on it as soon as possible, but we don't set aside all of our funding for each and every need. We want to have an opportunity available for funds for something like that when it comes to the need. We are developing a couple of parks out there, and I'd definitely like to elaborate more on those, if I can get your contact information after this. We only had a short amount of presentation tonight.
Sure, appreciate it. And just one last thank you. President Hart mentioned the bus tours at the beginning. We hosted one up in the far northwest last month. Appreciate those who were able to make it out, and Sandra and Harrison for coordinating that. Thanks again.
Thanks. Next speaker to come before council is Mr. Daniel Ajaye. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
I'm representing the North Linden Area Commission, and I serve as the vice chair, and also the chair for Linden Health and Safety Committee. And tonight, I just want to speak on the public safety. And what I want to say is not really specific to Linden alone, but it's something that I believe is affecting our city. And very briefly, it has to do with transportation, speed, over speed, and all of those things. I think there is a challenge we are here to discover, and that is the challenge between the younger generation and the hard-earned generation competing on the same road. For the young people, they are smart, they are ITech, you know, generation. And then the whole hard-earned generation, we want to take our time driving on the road. And the other challenge is, the younger generation, and I'm talking between sixteen and twenty-five, they are phone generation. And so you're surprised that somebody is making a video call and is driving. And so here is my challenge to all of us. What are we going to do to ensure that securing a driver license or a temporary permit is not just going to the park, learn how to do the maneuverability procedure, and then go in there and just do that and get your license? But that we can put a stringent principle in place that will create a sense of maturity and responsibility before sitting behind wheel and say you are driving on the road. Because this is a critical thing that I see, that if I just go there, within thirty minutes, I learn the skills, and I go in, I do the test, and I pass, it doesn't mean that I'm mature to be on the road. And that's one of the critical things that I see that is affecting our city. And sometimes you're driving, and then you'll just be wondering, are we driving on the same road with this young folk? So I want to put a challenge to all of us, that the earlier, the better for us to checkmate these excesses and put things in right perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't think you're going to get a lot of disagreement from a lot of folks about the frustrations that you have. Lately, I had this on the way here, of me going what I thought was an appropriate speed, and someone else thought it was not an appropriate speed, and the challenge of dealing with that, whether it's generation or otherwise. I think one of the things as a city, and bringing it back to the capital budget commissioner, is about the built environment. We build, when we build transportation systems, we encourage or discourage certain types of behavior based upon how that infrastructure is constructed. And for decades in this city, we were not terribly thoughtful about how that infrastructure was created, particularly around the roads that we built, the speed limits that were allowed, and sort of the cultural norms that existed. And I think one of the things that is really important, I want to pause to allow Councilmember Brose Dippia to talk about this, as the chair of public service, or certainly the department, but the workaround Vision Zero, which is, you know, dollars that are being spent to, again, make the roads safer for everybody, and one of the things is certainly the goal, is just to slow people down. And I think beyond that is something that was adopted last year at council, which is called the Thoroughfare Plan. And this is, for sort of lack of a better term, this is sort of our bible as it relates to how are we planning to consider, continue to construct roadways in Columbus, and where are they appropriate to have certain types of roadways in neighborhoods and different parts of the city? Because that built environment really matters. And again, if you look at a thoroughfare plan from, say, twenty-five years ago, it looks radically different today. Now, again, the issue is when you have roads that have been constructed for fifty, sixty years in a certain kind of way, it takes a lot of money to change them over time. But again, that is where we're moving towards, because the tension that I think you just articulated that happens on our roadway, and that turns into a public safety issue as well. And I think that's something that, you know, and I see folks nod in right now across the room, too often we have folks in which, like, that kind of issue happens, and it unfortunately bleeds over into an incident that is not good for anyone. But again, the built environment itself has a lot to do with how folks are interacting with the world around them. So again, I want to pause at the chair and get her comments as well.
I just also want to say, as a mother of a fifteen-and-a-half-year-old, I deeply feel what you are sharing, as we are teaching her how to drive. Part of Vision Zero is that we've partnered with Columbus City Schools, and we are actually, you know, because there's been a removal, even some of us, when we were in high school, you could actually take, you know, driver's ed in school or at summer school or whatever, that's been removed from the curriculum. But what we've done is we've partnered with Columbus City School to teach some of the principles of Vision Zero to our students. So thinking about pedestrian safety, thinking about roadway safety, thinking about putting your phone down, all of these things that we talk about around, again, I think, like, it essentially is, if you think about driver's ed, like driver's ed, but for today, right? And for young people today and the distractions that they have. And so part of that philosophy is that, I think, you know, for some of us, it's a little older, as we get older, it's harder to adapt new rules. And so we're building to President Protem's point, we're building roadways to change behaviors. And then we're working with our young people to start to instill that early on, so that they can adopt those behaviors early on. I mean, the thing, I mean, I think that all of this, there's three parts to this, right? It's the road, using the tools, building the roadways so that they're safer. It's us all being accountable to that, using the tools of the road. And then the third leg of that stool is really enforcement, and that's really working with and partnering with our partners at CPD, so to ensure that there is accountability. So we've lowered speed limits in downtown to twenty-five miles an hour, but we need to make sure that people are actually driving twenty-five miles per hour, right? So while we make different road conditions, we also need to have accountability. So those three things together really are a strategy to trying to make the roadway safer. Now, obviously, we're undoing a problem that has been building over time, so it's going to take us a while to get there. But I just wanted to share that that education piece is something that we are working on, and it is part of Vision Zero. And then Assistant Director, I don't know if there's any last points that you wanted to add, or, great?
Assistant Director, I did want to ask, so again, there's significant funding in this capital budget for starting to implement these Vision Zero policies. I wonder if you just talk historically, I mean, this is a pretty big shift in a sort of short amount of time, sort of addressing these kind of things. So I understand you probably don't have, you know, all the historical numbers going back from, like, how much we spent on traffic calming in nineteen eighty-nine, but this is pretty different and a pretty significant investment. I just want to take a moment for the department to talk about, like, how change of a priority in budgets talk, right? That's how we signal our priorities, and just want to give you a moment to sort of talk about what that investment looks like compared to maybe past decades.
Thank you, President Protem. Yeah, this has become a very big priority since we kicked it off three years ago, two to three years ago, I believe it was three years, that Vision Zero 1.0 and the initiatives of moving this program in place. We've dedicated, the first year, five million dollars of our operating funds at that point in time. And then just last year, we did five operating and five capital. And we're continuing that with this budget, another five million and five billion throughout each year. So it's very important, as Councilmember mentioned, too, we have a public hearing tomorrow night that's going to go through Vision Zero 2.0, and all the strategies that we're going to implement over the next five years, from 2023 to 2028. So we are starting to make those investments to change that habit and make streets safer and slower.
Thank you. And again, when we talk about budgets mattering, if you attend this hearing next year and the year after that, I would imagine you're going to see that level of funding, if not significantly more, as we continue to implement this plan. So again, I think it's a fantastic point, Commissioner, just about, again, how we're seeing some of these tensions sort of play out across the city. And frankly, when people are going slower and we have a safer environment, people are going to be out of their house more, enjoying knowing their neighbors and the community more, which, again, makes the city a safer and better place to live. And it all comes back to sort of how we construct the environment around us. So I appreciate the comments and advocacy here tonight. Next speaker to come before this hearing is Commissioner Jennifer Chamberlain.
Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Directors. I'll be really quick. Proud member of the Far East Area Commission of the GEC, Greater East Side Coalition, with the Mid East Area Commission and the Greater Southeast Area Commission. All I want to say is, Pride Center, we need more space. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. For possibly the most succinct testimony here tonight, and the whole point of being here tonight, so thank you very much. I know we have one additional speaker, unfortunately, I think we lost the speaker slip at some point, so I want to invite this gentleman up, and we'll go about getting his contact information afterwards. So I apologize for that, but the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, it was a John Q. Public one.
There we go.
Because I don't give my name to government. So, these little packets right here, I was told at the desk, they're for the community leaders. They should be for everybody, not just community leaders, every person who walks in this door. Every person who walks in this door. This little thing with Mr. Mitchell Brown's information on it is the best thing I've got here. Why these six people right here don't have one is beyond me. They deserve one just as much, because I want to know who they are, what they're, what they do, how to contact them and everything else. You know, this is my first time here, this is my first time speaking to the city. I'm usually throwing a rant over at Coda. Speaking of Coda, we need a bus, 24/7, one bus, 24/7, that takes somewhere, that broad and high, to the impound lot. Why there's not a bus that takes everybody from at least one side of town to that impound lot is beyond me. I got my car towed there a couple of years ago, and then when I drove it out of there, I had car issues. Y'all killed my car. But do I, did I have a way to fix it? No, I did not. I had no way to fight the charges, nothing. Like, it was fine before you towed it, but afterwards I had issues. It doesn't make sense. Ma'am, right, yes. I loved the information you gave. It felt more scripted when you were answering, answering Councilman Harding, or Councilman Remy, but when you answered Councilman Harding, it was more genuine, I felt. Like, oh, it's a great question, it was a great question, every single time. Harden's question, it felt more genuine than the answer. You know, tow yard, all locations, all the locations that you mentioned that were getting done in the packet. Steve, I would have loved to seen it in here. Necessarily, it doesn't need to be in there, in the PowerPoint, it could have been taken out, but to have that information to where so many people didn't have to write that down would have been tremendous. Some of the slides were left out. 311 has to do better. I tried to find out where we were at today, dude was like, well, let me Google that. Oh, it says South Parsons for the north side? Yeah, that don't make no sense. So I'm going to need some training for them, some customer service skills approved, because that just was not cool at all. That was, yeah. And the vision of power, are we putting turbines in the water pipes to bring in some type of additional power to the city? And then are we trying to get more customers, more residents of the city to get the vision of electricity power to fight AEP and their tykes right? Why should they take the money? If you're a city of Columbus resident, you can get, you can get the vision of electricity power, take it. Put that money towards the use. We just had the dispatch talk about, we don't have enough pools for the summer. What happened to Devonshire, Beechcroft, JC, all these pools got killed, filled in and everything else. We got to do better with that. And then because 4th of July is coming up, this is the best thing in the world. Promote, get Vance's Gun Shop involved, all of them. Sell specials on blanks. Teach these kids to shoot the ground if they got to do celebrity gunfire, or shoot blanks. Maybe they'll get too drunk and stupid and forget that, oh, all their blanks are loaded in the clips, and then when they try to shoot each other, they'll be shooting blanks, and less people will die. But they're not going to stop shooting guns, they're stupid. At least teach them to shoot blanks or to the ground.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight, and I appreciate the suggestions on the forum. You know, I think this is the second or third forum we've done. We have another one, which I'll announce here in a little bit. The whole goal for these is for us to be as accessible as possible. Most of the council members, you'll be able to find their contact information on the website. Anyone wants to email me at any time, my email is radorans, D-O-R-A-N-S, at columbus.gov, that's on the website. I think one of the things that, again, we can do is make sure that folks have the ability to follow up. And I think all the, all the folks that are here from the departments are genuine when they say they need to follow up with individuals on specific issues. One thing I did want to mention, since it was brought up around sort of the power infrastructure, is that Columbus has an aggregation program. So our power aggregation program, so folks are not on city power, and I think most of the areas, well, not all, but portions of the north side are not within, so we have a city utility, so you're on city power, and then folks that are serviced by the AEP utility. The vast majority of the city is serviced by AEP as utility. Those that are, are eligible to be in the city of Columbus Aggregation Program, which right now, as of, I think this last week, is about 30% lower in cost than the default rate from AEP. So you can actually get on the Department of Public Utilities website. Mr. Lee, can you, do you have that, the aggregation program website offhand? The website?
I don't have it offhand, but...
If you Google Columbus Aggregation Program, you will be able to get there. Most folks are already enrolled in that, if you're in the city of Columbus, but if you opt, but if you opted out, you can opt back in at any time, and that rate is, again, about 30% lower than what the default rate is compared to AEP power. And the other thing, sir, just to mention, it's actually the first time, we actually, I believe it was in last year's capital budget, we actually put in funds, actually be, start the process to begin to generate power at Hoover Dam for the first time in, I think, well over a decade. So the city is thinking about how to utilize their own assets right now in order to generate additional power, additional clean power for our residents that are, again, serviced by the city utility. Again, want to thank everyone for being here tonight, for the questions, comments. Again, it's our goal to make sure that these meetings help council work with the administration to address these types of issues that are out in the neighborhood. I always like to joke, there are seven council members, which means we can't be in every neighborhood all at once, which is why we're in places like here tonight, to chat with you all, to make sure that we're really getting an on-the-ground view from folks, whether or not it's an investment that's in this capital budget, or it's an investment in future years in the capital improvement plan. So again, appreciate everyone's engagement here this evening. Our final hearing in the capital budget will be held virtually, so if you want to let other folks know that maybe didn't have an opportunity to be here tonight, they can engage online, maybe a little bit easier for folks potentially. And that is on June 13th at 4:00 p.m. And that will allow folks, again, an additional opportunity to comment on this budget before it comes before council for a vote. So with that, again, want to thank everyone for being here, certainly everyone from the departments, my council colleagues for taking the time out, and certainly, if you have any questions about, again, the budget, we've got folks that are here, you heard the different council members, the committees that they cover. But also, we heard a lot of concerns here tonight that are not necessarily capital budget issues, and those are ones that council engages with the administration on every single day. So it is our job to be responsive and work with you on helping to address the issues that are happening in your neighborhood. So with that, again, want to thank folks for being here tonight and appreciate your engagement, and have a great and safe evening.